Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to our regular City Council meeting for November 1st, 20 of '21. Let's go ahead and call to order, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez? Absent. Councilmember Haquez? Absent. Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Here.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here. Thank you. And we will now have our invocation by Dave Blackwell of the United Methodist Church. If they are here, looks like not. So let's go ahead and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. We appreciate that. I'd like now to ask Beth Ketchmar if you'd like to come up and address City Council.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the time to speak. My name is Beth Ketchmar. I live at 509 Main Street in Canyon. And I was originally going to bring this up during the Abbey, but it's not specifically to the Abbey. This is what I'm going to say. It's something that I feel very strongly about the growth and development of our community and what other communities have done to bring more value to the area by retaining their natural resources. Preserving our open spaces, our beautiful river corridor, and valuable agricultural land shows restraint and humility and benefits generations to come. We need to protect the natural resources and the natural conditions that currently exist in this area and to provide our children and future generations opportunities for solitude and recreation and to preserve the scientific, historical, and educational value that it brings to our community. I'm not suggesting that we stop all growth and development or that the owners of the Abbey or any other privately owned property do not have the right to develop their property. It is important that we protect property rights. However, when one lives in an area as enriched with natural resources as Fremont County, it is easy to think you have so much space and so much time to protect natural areas. If a community is not careful, when finally development is all we have, we realize that we should have acted long ago to preserve these natural resources. Now is the time to preserve and conserve our open spaces, natural areas, and the beautiful river. Whether you have spent your whole life in this area or moved here more recently, I believe that most people love this area for all the environmental beauty and wonderful recreational opportunities. As a person who is very invested in our community, runs a business here, has raised our children here, and deeply appreciates our outdoors, I would ask you, our elected officials, to carefully plan for our future and to have the foresight to protect what is most valuable in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. We appreciate that. I'd like to accept any announcements from the council members at this time. If there are no announcements, well, go ahead.
We do have a general government meeting this Wednesday, starting at 5:00, right here in these chambers.
Thank you. And that'll be on business licensing, I believe. Ryan Stevens, did you want to go over our consent agenda for us?
Yeah. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Item 7A is to approve the minutes for the regular City Council meeting on October 18th and the special City Council meeting on October 11th, October 15th, the retreats, and October 20th, the budget hearing. 7B ratifies the purchase of network and security hardware utilizing CARES funds with X-Spike Technologies in an amount not to exceed $19,700. 7C extends bid 2520 Kahuna Ventures agreement in an amount not to exceed $19,000. 7D awards bid S0421 Interview Room System to Axon Enterprises, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $23,063.44. 7E authorizes the mayor to sign a letter of support for the Florence Architectural and Cultural Traditions Board of Directors for the Rialto Theater. 7F authorizes the mayor to sign a Water Services Agreement for 3343 Highland Avenue. 7G authorizes the mayor to sign an easement agreement with 703 Four Mile Lane. And 7H is to receive and file a list of bills.
Are there any questions for Ryan Stevens at this time? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I had, I guess, two comments on the consent agenda. One on item B, I understand that due to CARES Act funding timelines, this wasn't formally competed and that this purchase was not authorized in advance by City Council. This is for the $19,700 purchase of networking and security hardware. And I just would like to register that I'm concerned that this occurred, and I hope that it doesn't become a regular practice, that things are brought to us for ratification rather than prior approval, especially items of this dollar amount, given what our city charter states.
Yeah. And this is being brought for ratification because it was not pre-approved? But no, this is not a normal case. This is special circumstances given to the CARES fund and the timeline that we have to spin that down.
The second thing that I just wanted to flag that I'm just a little bit concerned about is in the receiving and filing of the list of bills, it includes $12,934.50, which is for the Public Works Director search. And given that the entire contract was only for $15,000 and that they only did a very limited amount of that work, I guess I'm just a little bit disappointed that we are ending up paying almost the entire amount.
I had a similar question because it did not come with a viable candidate that would work for Canyon City, unlike the work that they had done with us before.
Yeah. And unfortunately, they still spent time doing the recruitments, and that does include the hard costs outside of the agreements, which would have been above the $15,000 for the original contract for advertising the position in various places.
Councilmember Reed?
Picking back on what Amy said with that, I would hope that going forward, maybe we can continue to look for additional recruitment agencies because this seems to be reoccurring, where we're not getting the results that we're paying for ultimately. And because, again, I understand with, you know, the head-hanging concept that we don't always get the candidate that way, but the fact that there was not a lot of opportunity for renegotiation of that amount, I would like to maybe see different contracts going out where we do have some sort of a, maybe there's like a retainer piece, and then if they're successful, then we pay an additional amount or something like that. So I would just recommend maybe we can look into that further for our future recruitment.
Any further comments or questions?
We can...
Go ahead. Sorry.
Yeah, we can certainly, no, that's all right. You know, we can certainly look at other recruitment firms. Just for council's awareness, the costs for most other recruitment firms start around $20,000 to $25,000. So, starting at $15,000 with KRW was a pretty good deal.
Okay. So, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I did have just one other, I guess, comment and question. With regard to item D, which is the Interview Room System, I just wanted to note that I know that evidence preservation and evidence storage and kind of maintenance has been an ongoing challenge for our police department. So I was really excited to see that as kind of a way forward to make sure that we are able to properly house it, store it, keep track of it. So was just really excited about that. And I did just want to make sure, I also really appreciate that the city is looking to save money by, you know, doing the servers and doing the switches and doing those things that we can do internally ourselves. I just wanted to make sure that that wouldn't cause any issues with regard to the relationship or the guarantees by Axon with regard to their storage, so that all of those are still firmly in place. Thanks.
Good evening. Yes, so there won't be any issues with the relationship with Axon to digital evidence storage. They actually recommended that we source our own because they have a higher cost for their hardware. Most of what they're providing is the licensing to run the software that's going to be on the physical hardware. So they were perfectly acceptable with us sourcing our own equipment and moving forward with their licensing.
Thank you so much, Elijah.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just comment on the easement agreement for Floodway and Floodplain on the Four Mile Line property. The, for council members that weren't present when this originally came up, the issue was that the city, the city has requirements for stormwater runoff, essentially imposed by the federal government, their unfunded mandates. And the city at one point was deferring any actions on easements for floodwaters or runoff until later in the process, which created problems because the properties were platted with certain expectations of being able to develop the property, put certain housing units on them and things like that. And that created a problem when, at a later date, the city came in and said, wait a minute, you have to give us an easement for runoff control. And so at that time, council changed the rules so that these requirements came in at the beginning of the process rather than in the middle, to make sure that everyone was on the same page and that everybody had an opportunity to know what the requirements were before they developed a particular piece of property.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. As we ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda, we do need to include an amendment to the agenda to continue the public hearing for item 9B on the Abbey to November 15th. And this is based on further preparation, that the applicant wished to have some more time, based on citizen feedback that they received at the last public hearing.
I do have a question on that. Mr. Hoffman, does the, do we, do we need to open the public hearing and then continue it? Is that, is that the...
That's probably a better way to do it. And then the public hearing opens, and then everyone that was here, the record reflects that it was continued to the 15th.
Oh, good point. Thank you. I appreciate that. Well, then we just need a standard motion for the consent agenda. Councilmember Smith?
Madam Mayor and Council, I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second?
There has been a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll call the vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you, Council. Ryan, would you like to give an administrator's report today?
You know, with a full agenda, even with the continuation of the Abbey, I will defer to questions.
Any questions for Ryan at this time? Seeing then, we will move on to item 9A. I'm going to open the public hearing for the multifamily dwelling at 422 Macon Avenue. This is an introduction and adoption by Title Only of Resolution 25, Series of 2021, entitled "A Resolution of the City of Canyon City, Colorado Approving a Special Review Use Permit for Multifamily Dwelling on Certain Property Within the City of Canyon City." This is continued from the October 10th, 2021. I will turn the time over to Patrick Mulready, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. This evening, we are conducting a public hearing on a request for approval of a special review use to allow multifamily residential as the principal use of a property located at 422 Macon Avenue. It should be noted that this is the final project to be processed under the city's old Title 17 zoning standards. Subject property is located on the north side of, I'm sorry, the south side of Macon Avenue, approximately 88 feet west of the intersection of North Fifth Street and Macon. Property was part of the original incorporation of Canyon City, and according to the Fremont County Assessor's Office, the structure on site has an effective build date of 1960. The property is approximately 5,227 square feet in area, which is consistent with the lot sizes for most parcels in the vicinity of Main Street. The existing structure on site appears to contain 6,826 square feet of area between two above-ground floors and a basement, and the building footprint covers almost all of the lot. This property has two previously approved special review uses, a 2002 approval that allowed for motorcycle sales, and a 2006 approval that allowed for a training facility, as defined in the old Title 17. Training facility in this instance means a school for special instruction in artistic or practical professional skills, including but not limited to art, dancing, gymnastics, archery, or martial arts. Staff recommends that if the multifamily residential use, residential is as a principal use of the property is approved, these two previous special review uses should be repealed. The CB Central Business District Zone is intended to be primarily non-residential in nature. The goal was to activate ground floor spaces for buildings in the CB zone to have retail or restaurant-type uses and residential uses to be above the ground floor. This is particularly applicable to Main Street. 422 Macon Avenue is located on the next block over from me. The existing uses in the 400 block of Macon include offices and medical offices, retail and personal services, and age-restricted multifamily residential, which means not only is there a precedent for multifamily residential in the areas within the CB Zone District off Main Street, good planning principles would recommend having a resident population in or near to a Main Street in order to support more retail and restaurant-oriented uses. Because this project was submitted August 6th, 2021, it precedes formal adoption of the new UDC, which means it falls under the previous Title 17 provisions, in which no use was required to provide off-street parking in the CB Central Business District. This particular property, with a building footprint covering almost all of it, cannot reasonably accommodate any off-street parking. The applicant addressed this at Planning Commission, and I haven't seen Lester. I was hoping he would be here this evening for his portion of the presentation to speak to further. But the applicant has a goal of this project to not only seek tenants who will be more pedestrian in their commuting habits, but also to have peak parking demand for the apartment units be in the evening hours, which would not conflict with the parking demand for the commercial unis around the property during the daytime. As defined in the old code, Section 17.24.030B, special review uses are evaluated against six criteria, ranging from size and location to traffic generation and parking to buffering to the potential to generate nuisance conditions upon neighbors. Staff has evaluated this request to allow multifamily residential as the principal use in the CB zone against those six criteria and found that the proposed use will be harmonious with the scale and character of this particular neighborhood and will not create land use conflicts for surrounding properties. Additionally, the CB zone disallows lack of parking to be a consideration for special review use under the old Title 17. Staff therefore, staff and the Planning Commission therefore recommend that City Council approve the proposed special review use for multifamily residential at 422 Macon Avenue with the adoption of Resolution 25, Series of 2021. This resolution will have the effect of removing the two previously approved special review uses, as they would not be compatible with the residential nature of the proposed use. That would conclude the staff presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have. I was hoping Lester Lamone would be here, but I'm not seeing him in the audience this evening.
What about the owner, James Hughes? See him in the audience today? Neither are... Okay. Any questions by council for Patrick? Councilmember Reed?
Hey, Patrick. Thank you for that. I guess one of the questions that I'm just not understanding completely because of the change within regards to the parking, when I'm looking at everything, help me understand where people are going to park in that area, because when I'm looking at it, I'm not seeing it.
So there is on-street parking available on Macon Avenue. It is not overly plentiful, but it is there. And the idea is that with apartments, with residential, the peak demand for parking on street is going to be in the evening hours when the residents are home. For the businesses on Macon Avenue, they're going to have a contrasting period of time where they have peak demand for parking, that would be during the daytime when they're open for business. Therefore, these two uses would not be competing for the same parking resources at the same time. The applicant is also hoping to attract tenants who will maybe commute by work to bike, by bike, or as a pedestrian, walking to work. So they have some strategies in mind for what they're proposing.
Okay. And the parking lot that's to the north of that, I'm assuming, is owned by someone not...
That parking lot is actually owned by the Seniors Retirement Center that's located across the street. That is private property.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Just on the issue of parking, even though it's not a condition that we can deny an application over, apparently from your presentation, but if, just as anecdotally, hope isn't a solution, and if it's anything like Main Street, there will be a conflict with residents versus business consumers. It's just, it's just, it's one of the reasons why we're aggressively seeking more parking downtown.
This is certainly true, and I think the city obviously has options for where to place additional parking areas downtown. This particular development with only four dwelling units that they're planning to put in there, I don't think is going to trigger a tipping point for this block of Macon Avenue.
Although technically, if it was in a different neighborhood, it would require six, six parking spaces.
It would, yes.
Which is significant. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Corey, could you shed some light on that portion of Patrick's presentation about how our current, or the old zoning disallows parking to be a consideration? Thank you.
I don't know what else I can add, other that we are required, based on the time we received the application, to apply the criteria that existed at that time. That is certainly one of the issues that the city fixed in the new zoning, but we can't apply the new code based on the timing of the application.
I'm sorry. Just to be clear, the old code specifically disallows us to consider parking?
Correct.
In the Central Business District?
Yes. The Central Business District waived parking requirements at all.
So it's kind of a balance, like one, it's difficult for the lack of parking, but another time, it also encourages development for those who want to create more affordable housing, that that's an expense that they don't have to foot. And so there's, there's kind of that pros and cons.
And it's a struggle, because you want to bring density to your downtown in terms of all the ways you do that, but I think the new code addressed some of those issues better than perhaps the old one did.
Councilmember Reed?
So, coincidentally, when I pulled this up on Google Earth, there's a festival that's going on right across in Macon Plaza right now. And so I guess I would just want to make sure that, for the sake of the project, that they have some ideas in mind, because that would be very frustrating to come home at the end of the day with your groceries and be trying to get into your place when there's an awesome festival. So maybe, maybe you just don't get groceries, maybe you just don't eat at Macon Plaza that night. But I just think that it warrants discussion and awareness for that project in order to be able to have it be successful, because there's just no other places around there that I can see.
And so if you want to have that downtown living lifestyle, you need to be aware that parking will be an issue for you as a resident.
Absolutely. Bike racks.
I have some questions on a different vein, and one, Lisa Stess, I'm glad you're here today, because this is a 1960s building. It qualifies to be registered as a historic building, possibly. I don't know if it has had any major changes to it, but it could. Do you see it being able, a candidate for registration and for potential tax breaks?
Not knowing what's going on on the backside, I can't tell if that was an older structure with new facade. It is.
It's a house.
It is a house. I wondered, yeah.
It's just a house there.
Interesting. But even the front looks like it is a 1960s.
1960s, Neomansard.
Technically, it could qualify if they were, and I bring this up, that potential opportunity for historical designation and tax breaks, because, and this is another question maybe for Patrick or Kathy at the Building Department, is that because they are putting four residential units into this building, it turns into commercial use. And I don't know if they're aware upfront that that means putting in fire sprinklers and more firewalls and egress windows and all of these things that are going to be added expenses for them in doing that.
They have already submitted their building permit. They are aware of the obligations that they will have to convert this to a multifamily residential use. So that is already sort of cooked into the package.
That's good to know, because I was worried, I didn't want them to have any surprises. But I did notice that two of the bedrooms did not have egress windows on them, and so it's...
And I think that's something that will, there will be comments about that from the Building Department.
All right. Yeah, I just want to make sure eyes are wide open from the very beginning. Any other questions or comments from the City Council? If not, and we don't have anyone in the public who would like to address the council on this matter, then I would like to close the public hearing and call for a motion Councilmember Smith? I don't know why my box isn't getting everybody.
Madam Mayor and Council, I move to approve Resolution 25, Series of 2021.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? And I will call the vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
It has passed. Thank you, City Council, and thank you, staff, for your work on this. Let's now move on to item number 9B. This is a historic site park view in. I will open the public hearing for the introduction and first reading by Title Only of Ordnance 26, Series of 2021, entitled "An Ordnance of the City of Canyon City Designating the Building Located at 258 Griffin Avenue, Canyon City, Colorado, as a Historic Property." Patrick Mulready?
Actually, this will be...
Oh, you were right, Lisa. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This is a public hearing and first reading for Ordnance 26, Series 2021, to initiate the process for the designation of a structure located at 258 Griffin Avenue as a local historic property pursuant to the city's Municipal Code, Section 123090. The property is formerly named Lucas House, or the Fred Rouse House, is located at 258 Griffin Avenue, formerly 28 West Griffin Avenue, located in the M and B, or Unknown Subdivision, and was commonly known as Old South Canyon Neighborhood. The current property owners are Kevin Cundriff and Richard Maluer. They have been duly noted, noticed by mail, and signs were posted on the property at least 15 days prior to this public hearing. The structure was originally built circa 1880. The original owner was Louisa W. Lucas, and the structure has not moved from its original location. The former Lucas House is a simplified two-story brick Italianate house with a square or four-square floor plan. The two-story sleeping porch across the front facade of the building, which is an historical addition to the house, gives the structure more of a craftsman appearance at first glance. The structure has gone a couple historical additions or remodels to the original structure, which were done in the first quarter of the 20th century. These additions include the full facade, two-story screened-in porch... These additions include the full facade, two-story screened-in porch, and the back areas of the house. The back wood-constructed additions consist of a kitchen, bathroom, and laundry area. According to the application form, the property has fallen into disrepair and needs a full restoration and rehabilitation to bring it back to its former state. The application also states that previous owners installed wood paneling on the interior walls and drop ceilings throughout the house. Many of the decorative corbels were removed and were found in the basement. The main staircase inside the house is original. For the significance of the property, the house first appears on a map of Canyon City compiled from official records by W.C. Willetts of Denver, Colorado, in 1886. The house is listed as being owned by L.W. Lucas. Mrs. Louisa Waters Lucas was an early settler to Fremont County, having come out here with her husband and several children prior to 1870. The Lucas family initially homesteaded in the Garden Park area and received a land grant in Lincoln Park. Her husband, David Lucas, purchased the property where the house currently sits from William Catlin in 1870, according to the property deed records held at the Fremont County Clerk and Recorder's Office. In 1879, David Lucas died, and according to the 1880 U.S. Federal Census, Louisa was living in South Canyon and very likely in this house with her two adult children. Louisa died in 1890, leaving the house to her children. The house eventually became a rental up until the 1930s, according to the U.S. Federal Census records. Six different families lived in the house from 1902 to 1951, at which time Fred Rouse, according to the property, acquired the property through a quiet title decree filed with the Fremont County District Court. Fred Rouse was a well-known and respected teacher in Canyon City. He taught at Washington, McKinley, Wilson schools over the course of his 23-year career. He served as an athletic coach for grade school teams and organized and managed community youth and recreation programs. He also served as the president of the Canyon City Teachers Association and was one of the first members, board members, of the Canyon City Area Metropolitan Recreation and Park District. He also served on the Board of Directors for the South Canyon Water District. He was very active with the Office of Economic Opportunity and at one, and a one-time commander of the Canyon City VFW post. He also ran for City Council on the Citizens Party ticket in 1869 and 1971. He lived in the house with his wife, Roberta, and their nine children until he died in 1973. In 1950, oh, 1974, the Board of the Recreation District passed a resolution naming a park as a memorial to Fred Rouse in Lincoln Park. In terms of architecture, this house is one of the few remaining brick Italianate houses in the South Canyon Neighborhood that has not been recited with stucco or vinyl or wood siding. The house also has most of its original window openings and is not, and has not been drastically altered from its original footprint, with the exception of the historical front porch addition and the minor back additions. The historic two-story screened-in sleeping porch across the front facade is a very distinctive architectural element that reflects the early 20th century concerns for health and the prevention of tuberculosis. Under these findings of facts, the structure meets the criteria for designation as listed in the city's ordinance. The original building and construction on the property took place prior to 1886, making it significantly more than 50 years old. The building has a few historical additions to the front and back, which were done over 50 years. The property was originally owned by David and Louisa Lucas and is also associated with Fred Rouse, one of the first board members of the Canyon City Area Recreation and Park District, with significant ties to the recreation and education of this community's youth. The house is also one of the few buildings that exemplify specific elements of an architectural style or period in the South Canyon Neighborhood. As this is a public hearing, staff recommends, City Council cites these findings of fact as stated in the staff report, the application form, and the Historic Preservation Commission's Resolution Number 5, Series 2021, to approve Ordnance 26 of Series 2021, designating the property located at 258 Griffin Avenue as a local historic structure. That concludes my report. I am happy to answer any questions, and the owners of the property are here in attendance.
Thank you. I would like to invite Rich and Kevin to come up and address council if you wish. Tell us about your project.
Thank you, Ashley, and City Council. We are just so excited. We've had this house since 2018, and it just stood out to us with all of the beautiful park that Centennial Park has become and all the money that the city has spent. Griffith Avenue just seems like a very important access in and out of that park, and with my background in architecture and historic preservation, I just got really excited to turn this property into a, just a shining landmark of the history that it represents. One of the really interesting things that I know Lisa found out that really fascinated me is one of the sons of Lucas, or Mel Lucas, was actually one of the excavators up at the quarry, up at the Garden Park Quarry, and that quarry is, one of the quarries is named after him. So we don't take it lightly that this house has a lot of history to it, and we can guarantee that as we move forward with the project, that we will give it every bit of care and love and attention that it deserves to really make that part of Canyon City shine. And I'm just really excited to get going. You know, once we bought it and really did a full evaluation, it became obvious, especially with the original brick exterior, that there was going to be a significant amount of money required to do the proper restoration that we had envisioned. And so this process was just really a godsend in learning about it and that we could apply and receive some historic tax credits, and I think it'll really help us do the house justice.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Counselor member Reed?
Thank you both for being here tonight and taking the time to meet with us. I just want to say I'm really excited. I've had the opportunity to see other homes that you guys have both worked on, and they're just absolutely beautiful. And so being able to see something like this, that when you drive down the road currently is just sad and dilapidated, to be able to be excited to see future for these old bones, just, I'm really thankful that you guys have invested in our community the way you have and that you have put such care into looking into the history and all of the little details of the homes that you have rehabilitated. So thank you so much for the opportunity for us to be able to review this project.
Thank you, Counselor member Reed. Yeah, it's, like I said, history is very dear to us, and where I moved from, Durango, Colorado, had just hundreds of homes that had been beautifully restored, and Canyon has some amazing homes of equal historic value, and a lot of them have been restored in our beautiful homes, but it seems like we have a long way to go, and we would love to be a part of that process. And, you know, creating something, you know, we have a lot of work to do in getting through specific plans and everything, but creating something that the community can be involved in and participate in when it's all complete. So we're, we're very, very excited.
Counselor member Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just echo what Counselor member Reed said, and also just ask regarding the name, if you'd like us to.
It was a working title that I didn't really mean to get in, put into the presentation, so we're really calling it the Lucas House for now, because that was the original builder. But because the project, we hope at some point will become a bed and breakfast, then we were just kind of going over some, some good name ideas.
Absolutely. So maybe we would just strike, if, if we're ready for a motion, I can make it and make an amendment to the title, unless there are other questions.
Go for it. Well, actually, so before we move to that, I'd also just want to say thank you. Rich, you were a part of a chat with the mayor, Facebook Live with the mayor, about kind of that revolution that's happening in Canyon City for remodeling older buildings, and you were an important part of that conversation and making that happen. And it is going to be super exciting. Looking in our agenda, oh, the state of this project, you do have a lot of work. And so this is the case in point of why we needed historic tax credits to help make it possible to take these dilapidated, underutilized buildings and turn them into something magnificent. And you definitely are capable of making that happen, so way super exciting.
Thank you.
With that said, I also, before I close the public hearing, I need to ask if there's anyone who wishes to speak or address City Council. And if not, then I am ready to close that public hearing and accept a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve a bill for Ordnance Number 26, Series of 2021, with the amendment in the title of Striking Park View Inn.
A second. There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll call a vote.
Counselor member Dennehy?
Aye.
Counselor member Reed?
Aye.
Counselor member Schmisher?
Aye.
Counselor member B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you very much, council. I will say pre-congratulations to our owners, but this is a first reading. There'll be another one in two weeks. Don't see any problems with it, though, coming forward. So thank you again, and thank you, Lisa. That was an excellent report and history, very, very interesting. I always love when these come beforehand, so I can become more learned on the history of Canyon City. So thank you, too. Is now?
Is there a resolution as well that goes with that?
The resolution was from the Commission, Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Just checking.
Oh, absolutely. Is your button, Brandon, try your button one more time.
I don't think it's working.
Yours is not working, but Mandy's, yours is starting to work, and Mimi, yours did as well. All right, so just, yeah, make your voice heard when you're. Thank you. So we are ready to move on to 9C, and this is the annexation and zoning of the Javernik property at 3040 slash 3050 East Main. Patrick?
Madam Mayor?
Excuse me? Madam Mayor and members of council?
Just a second, I need to open the public hearing. Okay, we are ready.
Madam Mayor and members of council, the second land use request related public hearing this evening is offered for consideration is the annexation and zoning of the property located at 3040 and 3050 East Main. The property is not currently within the incorporated city limits of Canyon City, and the property owners petition the city for annexation and a zoning of G.C. General Commercial. The subject property is comprised of two lots. One addressed as 3040 East Main Street and containing 0.89 acres. Second lot is addressed as 3050 East Main Street and contains 4.03 acres. The lots are situated approximately 1,027 feet west of the intersection of East Main and Steinmeier Avenue. To the east of the site is the Great Western Storage, Mini Storage Campus, and to the west of the site is the BLM Regional Office and Big O Tire. A modular office exists on the smaller lot, and the balance of the site is vacant and undeveloped and contains two zone districts in Fremont County. Smaller property is zoned B Business, while the larger lot is zoned MHP, Mobile Home Park. If annexed and zoned, these Fremont County zoning designations would be extinguished in favor of a zone district recognized by the city's municipal code. State statute requires properties seeking to annex themselves to have a municipality, to a municipality must have one-sixth of their perimeter, or 17% of the property boundaries, physically touching an existing municipal boundary. The Javernik property shares 1,858 linear feet, or 87% of its boundary contiguous to an existing municipal boundary. It therefore exceeds the statutory minimum for annexation. Updated earlier this year, the city's comprehensive plan identifies this property as part of a priority annexation area and encourages such annexations when the opportunity presents itself. The property owner has requested a zoning of G.C. General Commercial District as defined in Chapter 17 and 1702 and 1703 of the Unified Development Code. As part of an annexation, all properties must concurrently request a zone district to be applied to the subject property, and that zoning must be one which is established within the Canyon City Municipal Code, also known as the Unified Development Code. This should not be thought of as a rezoning, since the property has not been previously zoned in Canyon City. Therefore, the criteria applied to rezoning requests in Chapter 17.10.040D are not applicable in this instance. G.C. General Commercial zoning most commonly applied to parcels within the city limits along the East Main Street Corridor, U.S. Highway 50, and Fremont Drive Corridor. Indeed, all of the annexations to happen along the East Main Street Corridor in the past few years have been zoned G.C. General Commercial. As discussed earlier, there is a distinction to be drawn between a first-time zoning request and a rezoning of a parcel already within city limits. Zonings happen concurrently with an annexation and are therefore not subject to the criteria used to evaluate rezoning requests. With this in mind, zonings must be considered against the recommendations of the city's comprehensive plan, as well as the precedents the city has established with similar requests along this portion of East Main Street. In June 2021, the city formally adopted a new comprehensive plan. The land use element of that plan acknowledges the East Main Street Corridor, including those areas which have already been annexed as priority annexation areas, and recommends these as regional commercial. A commercial designation for this property continues the patterns of zonings applied to new annexations along the corridor for the last decade. These annexations in particular were granted as G.C. General Commercial, neighboring NNS subdivision, which includes both the Regional Bureau of Land Management Offices and Big O Tire, the Great Western Storage Facility property at 3070 East Main, the New Creations Inn at 2990 East Main, and the Fire District Station Number Three property at 3010 East Main. Therefore, staff finds the requested G.C. General Commercial District to not only be consistent with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan, but also the established policies and practices for parcels along the East Main Street Corridor. Therefore, staff and the Planning Commission recommend that City Council approve the annexation and zoning request for the Javernik property at 3040 and 3050 East Main to C. General Commercial District with the following actions. Adoption of Resolution 26, Series of 2021, citing the findings of fact concerning the proposed annexation. Adoption of Ordnance 27, Series of 2021, annexing the Javernik property on first reading and setting second reading for November 15, 2021. And adoption of Ordnance 28, Series of 2021, zoning the Javernik property to G.C. General Commercial on first reading and setting second reading for November 15, 2021. That would conclude the staff presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have. I believe Mr. Javernik is here to speak on behalf of the property.
Mr. Javernik, would you like to address City Council, please?
I really don't know what I can add. Sounds like he pretty well covered it. It is great to finally get this annexation completed. We started about two years ago and ran into a problem with Adam Lancaster over landlocked, and we finally got the quiet title. Everything's done. We're totally kosher. So. And then the sad part is about two months, a month before we finished our quiet title, Patrick called up and says, hey, we can work with you. But at that point, so, I don't know. Any questions?
It doesn't look like we have any questions at this time. Well, Brandon Smith.
My button's working.
Yay, we're back online.
I was just going to propose the motion to approve Resolution 26 of 2021.
So I will, first, I have to ask if there's anyone from the public who'd like to speak on this matter. And there is no, no comments. And so I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion for item, we'll start with item B1, or BI.
Madam Mayor and council, I move to approve Resolution.
Sorry, my problem, CI. Go ahead.
26, series of 2021, on first reading.
Second.
Corey, do I need, because it's a first reading, do I need to read that in full?
You do not.
The resolution.
You do not, and it is a resolution only. So that one you do not have to read in full.
Okay. So it had, there has been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I'll call a vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. That one has passed. We are now ready.
I would like to thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Oh, no, thank you, Mr. Javernick. And sorry, it's been a long haul for you. I'm glad that you're finally.
They probably made me money doing it.
That's a really, really good way of looking at it. We do have two more ordinances to pass, however. Brandon Smith.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 27, series of 2021, on first reading.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll call a vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you. Amy Schmisher?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve a bill for ordinance number 28, series of 2021.
Second.
I believe that Councilmember Dennehy barely, barely beat that one.
Thank you. Councilmember Dennehy?
A motion and a second. Any discussion? We'll call a vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, city council, and thank you, staff. Patrick, for yet again another thorough report. It is now time to open a public hearing for item DI. And this is introduction and first reading by title only of ordinance series 29, or ordinance 29, series of 2021. This is concerning the rezoning of the property known as the Canyon City Commons at the Abbey. We have had a request to continue the motion to November 15, 2021, in order to accommodate the applicant needing to do some more work and address citizens' concerns from the Planning Commission meeting the week before. Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Madam Mayor, I move that we postpone this public hearing until November 15, at which time we consider it in full.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll call a vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much, counsel. We are now ready to move on to item 10A. And this is introduction and first reading by title only of ordinance 24, series of 2021. This is an ordinance of the city of Canyon City repealing and reenacting chapter 6.08 and deleting chapter 6.10 of the Canyon City Municipal Code concerning the regulation and impoundment of dogs within the city. I don't know if we need to turn this time over to Ryan or Corey, which, whichever.
I, I can start.
Okay, thank you, Ryan.
So the ordinance 29, you may recall that at the general government meeting in September, we had a discussion regarding vicious dogs and dog ordinance in general. At that time, staff and legal counsel were given direction to rewrite this code. And we have done so. There's been a lot of discussion between staff and our attorneys. We also have had a lot of discussion with the Humane Society as well. I believe Chief Schick is there. He may want to elaborate on some of that. We tried to accommodate as many of the Humane Society's requests as possible. There was some education regarding the, this particular language and how it relates to municipal code versus, you know, the, the practice of actually going out and, you know, doing, catching dogs and bringing them to the shelter. So we, we need to clear some of that up as well. So with that, I'd turn the time over to either Corey or Chief Schick to, for any additional comments.
The, the only thing I would add is that unlike many of your ordinances, your prosecuting attorney was also very intimately involved in, in working with this because frankly, she has a lot more on-the-ground application as to how these types of ordinances work in practice. And this is modeled after some other ordinances that have been found to be very effective in addressing the issue. So a lot of, of her comments in terms of how this hopefully will work in application are embedded into the ordinance as well.
Thank you, Corey. Chief Schick, would you like to address counsel on the ordinance?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council, I'll just echo what Mr. Hoffman indicated. We vetted this pretty thoroughly with Ms. McCarthy, worked closely with the Humane Society and, and animal control officers. And I think this brings us in line with industry standards, best practices in terms of, of animal control. So I think we're, we're certainly on the right path.
Thank you, Chief. And I would like to invite you to go ahead and sit at the table up here because I have a feeling we'll have more questions for you, and especially on this item and the next one coming up. Doug Ray, I'd like to invite you to address counsel as well.
Hi. Well, I guess let me start by saying that my main focus is the animal shelter that provides animal services to all of Fremont and all of Costa County. It certainly is not writing dog codes, even though I have worked in Philadelphia and again in Maryland where I did help them rewrite their dog codes. So we spent an awful lot of time at the animal shelter. I would say two and a half, maybe three hours going over line by line of the code and reading it with, and when I say we, I mean my shelter manager, my customer service manager, the three of us went through this. And we met again with the chief and with Ryan, I'm not sure when it was, maybe beginning of October, whatnot. And we gave them all the suggestions we had. And I guess I was a little disappointed that all the suggestions we had didn't make it in here. And again, that's not my focus. My focus is the animal shelter. I'm willing to help this, but there's nothing I can do if the suggestions we put forward aren't accepted. No. So I really don't know what more I can, I can add to that.
What kind of suggestions were made that were not included?
I'm looking at a copy of what I sent to Ryan. There was just some minor grammar things that for whatever reason didn't make it in. And that, right up the very beginning, I was, I was just curious about that. But then as I started going through this, and I can see like, like there's no state statute, like if a dog bites another dog, there's no state statute that says that animal needs to be brought to the animal shelter. That's still in there. You know, rabies, paragraph number C, you know, they're saying that on the third line, at, at the expense of the owner for a period of 10 days. It shouldn't be 10, it should be 30 days. You know, and.
What item is that?
In rabies quarantine 6.08.060 on letter C. And I wish Susan was here. Susan, my shelter manager, she knows the Colorado law incredibly well. I just found out about this a few hours ago. And I'm really busy at the animal shelter with something else. So I didn't have time to go through this as, as well as I would like to. Or did I have time to really contact Susan on her day off and have her come here tonight? Because she could have spoken to a lot of this. You know, E, in the same section you're in right now, it says that no person shall kill any suspected or confirmed rabid dog except upon a written consent of an animal control officer. That's not accurate. It needs to be approval of the health department. And I guess I'm, if I'm wrong in any of this, then I'm wrong. But I, I, I don't believe that, that I am. Then there's just other things. I mean, there's just, I just went through and as I, I was just going through very briefly because I only had 30 minutes to look at this. And I just said, that wasn't accepted, that wasn't accepted. And again, it's not, that's, that's not my gig. Okay. I, I, I'm just willing to help. So if the city doesn't want to accept it, that's, that's a whole, whole nother thing. But it's certainly not my focus.
Okay. I did see on page seven, are you referring to item F, no person shall kill any suspected or confirmed rabid dog except upon the written consent of an animal control officer in consultation with the health department? Or is that a different item?
Well, again, I only have 30 minutes to look at this. I just went through and I briefly looked at the changes we submitted and the changes that were here. But what page are you on? Are you on page seven?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You're, you're right. It says in consultation, in consultation with the health department.
Although it still does have the 10 days quarantining.
Nope.
On item C.
There was something else in here, though, that I thought was a pretty big deal. It's when, what is it?
Which, which item was it? They said about the, if a, a dog bites another dog? And then you say there's no state statute that they need to be brought to the shelter.
That's rabies. That's the same section you're in, 6.08.060A. This was a problem that I encountered when I first got here with the county. The county was bringing me dogs left and right that were just getting into fights with the dogs. And there was, there's, there's no law that says that needs to happen. And all they were doing is filling up the shelter unnecessarily with animals that did not need to be there. And there's another one, just can't, I can't put my finger around it right now.
Okay. So it looks like, I just need a minute to review the ordinance according to some of your comments. Ryan or Corey, do you have any reactions to?
Yes. So in regard to the state statute, this was a, a conversation that we had with the city attorneys. And, you know, ju- just like everything else, we are a home rule city, and we can be more restrictive than the state. And I, I don't know if Corey wants to elaborate on that.
Yeah. I, what I would elaborate is to say, this is, I think the city has frankly a different interest in many respects than the shelter does. And this reflects the public health and safety issues that the city has experienced with, with dangerous dogs in the community and our respo- proposed response to that issue. So the city does have the authority to deviate. And so where you see deviations, it's based on both public health and safety issues that the city has experienced through the animal control and through the court, and tools that have worked in other communities to address that public health and safety issue associated with those dogs.
Well, I've worked in, respectfully, I've worked in three of the largest cities in the entire country, and none of those cities had an ordinance that said if a dog bites another dog, it needs to be brought to the animal shelter, not just Canyon City.
And, and one of the, one of the things we try to do is tailor this to the community you live in.
Councilmember Reed?
And, I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor, if I can just clarify something real quick. So Doug, 6.08.060, item A, is the, is the language you had issue with? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So the owner of any dog that bites any person or other animal shall notify the police department and shall provide such information as may be requested by an animal control officer. I believe we did alter that language.
Well, you altered it from the owner of any dog that bites any person or other animal shall deliver the dog to the city. So you changed shall deliver to notify.
I don't see anything about delivery of a dog in item A.
That's the, that's the original one that I worked off of.
That, that, that was changed.
That, yeah, that was the original language. But that's not what we have on our new ordinance.
Ms. Sellers wrote, pulled that out.
And I, I have a hunch that he's looking at the wrong version, frankly, because there is a highlighted redlined version in your packet. My hunch is he's not looking at that version.
No. I'm looking at the one that I went over with my managers and I met with the chief on, and I'm comparing it to the new one. So I, I, I'm looking at the right ones.
Mandy Reed, you had a comment or question?
Both. I feel like we have maybe some opportunities to communicate more effectively in our partnership between the city and the shelter, because I appreciate the time that you and your staff put into reviewing these to assist us. And I am concerned that after you spending that time, that there wasn't communication back to make sure that we were kind of on the same page. My impression was from the general government meeting that we kind of all made it pretty clear that we are working collaboratively on this effort and that the partnership that the city and the shelter have is valuable to both. Doug, you have areas of expertise that we, as a city council, don't have, and then vice versa. And so I completely respect and understand the perspective from, you know, Corey keeping us safe and legal. But I would like to see, you have not gotten this right before the meeting, with us seeing it, we've had it for longer than that. I just feel like there's opportunities that we could have communicated a lot better. So if there was some concerns, we could have maybe worked through them better before sitting up here making this decision. I'll say honestly, I'm not comfortable making any decisions on this now. I want to go back through it. And I want to see what areas you recommended that we chose to adopt and apply and what ones we didn't. So that's just my opinion.
Corey, it looks like you might have a reaction.
I, I, I appreciate the need for a partnership. We have much different roles as those that are protecting the public's health and safety out in the street and those that receive the animals. And so while I appreciate the shelter's concerns, I frankly have never seen this kind of reaction to a, what is frankly a needed update to your animal control ordinance. I'm not aware of what is, what the conversations were between Mr. Stevens, Chief Schick, and the shelter, and how those were communicated. But I will tell you that this is absolutely a state-of-the-art animal control ordinance that needs to be updated. If the council decides it wants to delay it based on the shelter's comments, absolutely we can do so. But this, this, from our perspective, this ordinance is, is ready to go.
And as I said earlier, this isn't, you know, to make a pun for the animal, I don't have a dog in this fight. It's just, my focus is the animal shelter.
Gotcha.
I said I wanted to help with this, and I was asked to help with it. So it's like.
I am, I am looking in here. I don't see on the new ordinance that we have on our end, where it says if a dog, you know, if they had been thought to have been bitten with rabies, that, that they would be brought to the shelter. It looks more, it has some language in here about them being closely confined by the owner. There is, looks like there could be a possibility for impounding.
Well, there was never any language that said they were brought to the shelter. I think the language in the first one was that, I don't have it in front of me. I think now it's saying that it's notified, the police need to be notified and delivered. I can't remember. But there was no language in there saying the animals were brought to the shelter indirectly. If the city's contacted and their, an animal's picked up, then it would be brought to the shelter.
Gotcha. Okay, Mayor Pro Tim Hammack has some comments. And then we'll turn the time over to Councilmember Dennehy.
Thank you. The, thank you, Madam Mayor. The, what we were just discussing, if you look in the redlined version under the same section, 080, I think it is, on page seven, you can see it did say deliver the dog to the city is what it previously was. And, and that would, of course, end up being in, in the shelter's lap. But, but that has been modified. I, I do have a specific question, and, and that's on the rabies quarantine. The, and Doug, you, you mentioned that you thought that should be 30 days. Is that correct?
Yeah. And Susan could better speak to that than. And Susan could better speak to that than I can. She's not, but Susan was very clear and she actually had a bunch of legal documents with her that said it was 30 versus whatever it says in here, 10.
It says 10 right now. Uh, yes, I, they, well, I was involved in a situation where a dog was playing with a, with a person and the dog struck the person with their teeth. Uh, and tha, that person's mother became very concerned about rabies and the quarantine was for a 30-day period for that animal. And is there, and so, so I guess my question is, do we have some reason to, I believe the, have, have we consulted with a veterinarian on the 10 versus 30 days issue?
To my knowledge, we have not consulted with a veterinarian. We have consulted with ordinances across the state of Colorado.
So other ordinances have the 10 days?
Absolutely.
So I'm looking online and it says that the quarantine is set at 10 days because a rabies-infected animal can only transmit the disease after clinical signs have developed. And once these signs have developed, the animal will die within 10 days.
And so this is a suspected animal of, an animal suspected already exhibiting symptoms.
Mm-hmm.
And, and that's what this deals with. Any dog which is suspected to be carrying rabies for 10 days and then quarantined for 10 days.
Well, they say even in some of the sites, even if they're, even if your dog has just been bitten by a dog, you should still probably quarantine it for 10 days just out of safety.
Well, currently at the shelter, if a dog bites a person, we have to by law hold it for 10 days.
10 days?
10.
Okay.
I'm not sure where Susan got the 30 from on this, but I would defer to her because she's incredibly knowledgeable about the law in Colorado.
Great. Thank you. That, that helps. Thank you very much.
Let's turn the time over to Councilmember Dennehy and then Councilmember Schmisher.
Well, Doug, I appreciate you coming here, but, you know, as I say, I think you do a fantastic job and it's a very valuable thing that you do for our community with the shelter. But I, I do believe as a city council member, I, and listening to Cory and what I've read here, we're on two different pages here because it, as much as I, I'd like to say we need to do everything that, our main concern here is the public safety. And, and, and that's what we all got to remember. We, no matter who's up in front of us and what businesses and that, the number one thing for us is to take the, the public safety as a whole. And looking at this, you know, and I've gone through it, there's a couple of things that as, as a dog breeder, once in a while I might disagree with, but, you know, it's nothing that we can't live without. But when I read this, I thought this was a, a very well put together thing and, and I've been around dogs, a lot of dog situations. I worked with pro trainers for quite a while, so I've, I've been in the essence of, of that field and where we've had to, we've even had encounters with dog bites and that. But I, what I think, I, I just wanted to recommend the, the city staff who worked on this and put it together because personally I thought it was a very well put together document.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I would just like to echo and underscore what Councilmember Reed said. I think the communication is really important and I guess I'd like to understand where, where we broke down. Like, it sounds like we heard from the Humane Society and got a lot of comments from them, but that they didn't necessarily hear back about which ones were incorporated and which ones weren't, and then weren't notified at this meeting, if I'm understanding, if I'm understanding this situation. So I guess what I'd like to understand is where we broke down and, and also understand why the comments that they had specifically weren't incorporated and, and why that wasn't communicated to them, including very simple ones like typos. So I, I would just like greater clarity on that.
So firstly, Cindy, do we have an extra copy of this so that we can give it to Ray? I want to make sure that you do have the, the correct copy.
I, I do. I printed it off from your agenda tonight.
You, you have the redlined version?
I do. The, the, that was the, that was the original one that, that I worked off of, yes.
Why don't you take mine?
I'll, I'll, I'll deliver mine to him.
Okay.
Make sure that they have that. And I think from this point, Chief Schick, I don't know if you have any comments that you would like to make?
Well, I'll just echo again what Cory offered. This is a, a well-vetted document and it's tried and true industry best practices. I do know that myself and, and Mr. Stevens met with Doug and, and his assistant. We did hear exactly what they, they had concerns about and we went over that with, with Ms. Sellers and those instances such as quarantining the animal suspected of biting.
Okay, very good.
We, we made that modification because we, we saw the logic in that. We didn't want to, we didn't over, want to overburden the shelter with, with dog cases that weren't, weren't significant, weren't rabie cases, things of that nature. So that was, that was changed. And the 10 days rather than the 30 days, again, it's a vetted, you know, instrument that other jurisdictions have, have tried and is considered true and will stand the, stand the test of lawsuits and, and so forth. So I think that's how we ended up here. I, could we have, probably should have gotten back up with Doug and his staff to go over the revisions that Ms. Sellers made to discuss those more. Well, we probably should have done that.
So, and I will say that this is a first reading, so there will be another reading. If there's additional changes that need to be considered by the city council, then absolutely we, we do have an additional opportunity to do that, to have that chance for more communication if...
And, and more, more time for, for Doug and his staff to, to see the, the redline. See where the changes have been made.
Right.
And perhaps dialogue a little bit with city staff.
And, and I do see from multiple states, the 10 days if you've been bit by rabies. So I, I do feel comfortable with that. I do however have other questions beyond, you know, the shelter's relationship with this particular ordinance. And this is on page five and this is item E on page five from 6.08.030, item E. And this is about an animal control officer who has reasonable cause to believe that the keeping or harboring of any dog is so hazardous, unsafe, or dangerous as to require immediate inspection to safeguard the dog or public health. And then, and it goes on to say how they're able to go, go ahead and go onto the property, into the property. And I'd like to know some examples of something that would create an ability for an animal control officer to go on the property without going through the normal protocols for your right of private property and...
I could think of an example of a dog being in the act of attacking someone. That would be my first example, where, you know, for example, if, if a, and I'll use a, maybe a stereotype, but if a mail carrier was delivering mail and was being at that moment attacked by a dog on someone's private property, that is absolutely an exception. I could, I could see immediately being one of the bases for that language.
And that's what I kind of assumed, but just the word, a reasonable cause, I don't know if that, if that has too much wiggle room for allowing an, a control officer to go inside somebody's home.
At the end of the day, the animal control officers, and we've had this discussion a lot lately, are trained and have, have received enhanced training lately on the Fourth Amendment. And this is, this is another example of Fourth Amendment. And so they are guided ultimately by the Fourth Amendment and it is what is known as exigent circumstances. It's the same type of exigent circumstances that would allow a police officer to go into private property without a warrant. There is no different standard. It has to be, you know, a, a, a real danger and real exigent circumstances.
My next question is at page eight, 6.08.090, and this is on noisy dogs. And I was curious about the enforcement of this section of the ordinance for noisy dogs barking, because like we, like we do hear common complaints from some citizens about noisy dogs, but not necessarily enforcement.
So I'm, I'm not sure I understand the question and it may be better for, for the chief, but I think part of the idea is if you have several dogs and they're making noise that disturbs the peace of others, you don't have to identify the particular dog. You still have to identify the particular place they're coming from, certainly, but I'm not sure if you're, if...
Well, so let's say that there's somebody, you know, if the residents are gone at work during the day and there's a dog that's barking all day long and they call animal control, what happens and what's that process?
Well, according to the, the ordinance, Madam Mayor, it has to be a, it's not an offense unless it occurs between 10:30 at night and 7:30 in the morning.
Or number two, when none of the residents reside at the place where the noisy dog is being kept or at ho, or are at home, which I assumed meant during daytime hours.
Correct.
Yes.
I'm just asking about enforcement because I, the residents that I've heard of had complaints, have said that they do complain, but nothing really happens. There's no teeth. Is that what this is correcting?
Yes.
Okay.
Just on that question, during our general government meeting, I had asked about the enforcement of the noisy dog ordinance, 608-210, violation penalty C, which is on page 18. And I had noted that the others, A and B both have a sliding scale where kind of multiple infractions, you get a higher and higher penalty. And that the only one that doesn't is the noisy dog ordinance. So I was just hoping for a little bit of clarity on why, why you selected to keep that the same. Thanks.
I frankly don't know what conversations went into that. I'm happy to make changes if that, if council thinks, thinks that's appropriate.
And I, I don't recall that we, in particular, had a specific discussion around the sliding scale for the noisy dog ordinance. So that is something we could add to match the other sliding scales.
It's just something that I had raised in the general government meeting, so thank you.
Is that something that you would like to see included?
I think that that could be helpful in addressing to, in addressing Madam Mayor's point and also just kind of consistency in terms of enforcement. Thanks.
Councilmember Reed, I see that your name is on here. Did I address your question or...
Not at this time, but I think I can hold it for closing comments prior to the final motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions? If not, then I would like to call for a motion in a second.
Can I, can I, one more thing with, with Councilmember Schmisher's question?
Sure.
So as it relates to what the desire is, for 6.08.090, it is a misdemeanor violation. Not, and so I think that is part of the distinction. There's more flexibility based on the nature of the offense. So for example, the fine is not less than $45 and no more than the maximum that's, that's allowed by Canyon City Code. I think the idea is that with these violations, you can have a very aggravated first offense. And so I think this was intended to give more flexibility. We can certainly fold it in to subsection B and have it be the number of offenses, but I think the flexibility was intended to allow for what can be more aggravating and mitigating circumstances on this particular type of offense and give more flexibility.
Thank you for that clarification. I, I did note that, you know, 608-210A and B are both also misdemeanors and both also have the flexibility, no more than the maximum fine provided for in section 1.28.010. It's just that they also, for multiple offenses, have prescribed that it will actually go higher. So my question during the general government meeting was, why isn't that not the case for the noisy dog, the 608.090? And I understand the desire to preserve flexibility because that can be a, a pretty significant issue. I just wonder if it might be helpful to have a line in there that states for multiple repeated offenses by the same owners, there, there would be increases in the appropriate penalties and fine. I know in the general government meeting that we all had a lot, or that several of us had a lot of questions and concerns and I really appreciated getting the redlined version to be able to see kind of where those were, were taken into account and, and the changes that were made. So thank you for that.
And so I would just ask for council's preferences. We're taught, because I know the motion was made in the second, if that's a desire to change so that we can make it before second reading.
We haven't actually made a motion yet.
No, there's, you, you had just asked for one.
I asked for one.
So that's why I was asked, that's why I was trying to get in before the motion was made.
Ah-ha.
So from, from my perspective, I, I mean, and I don't know how the rest of council feels, I think that that would be an appropriate change. And I would also, just I guess as closing comments, request that before second reading, that there is a meeting between the Humane Society and the city to review all of the Humane Society's specific edits so that they understand kind of what, what, which ones were included and which ones weren't and why, since we do have that time before the second reading. Thanks.
I would like to see that piece added in as well. I think it would be helpful and it just continues to flow with the other portions that we already have set up that way.
Then I would like to entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that with the caveats that Councilmember Reed and myself just noted, that we approve, or that we passed first reading of ordinance 24, series of 2021, noting that we would like the city and the hu, the city to reach out to the Humane Society about the comments that they made and address those prior to second reading and that we would like additional language in 608-210C.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second, any discussion? Councilmember Reed?
I guess my closing comments, I feel like I got a little derailed on focusing on the piece as far as what was in front of us only, but I do just want to remind everyone that as a city and city council, we've worked very, very hard on rebranding our customer service and our approachability to the community. And I do feel that it is a professional courtesy that if we request, whether it is a agency or a community member or a committee who puts time into assisting us in governing the city effectively, that we do make sure that we are communicating and holding up our end of the bargain and showing appreciation, whether or not we take it into account and ultimately include it in an ordinance or a resolution, I think is a secondary point. But I just think from the perspective of the customer service piece, that we're all working so hard to be able to put that best foot forward with the community. Situations like this is an opportunity for us to learn and to better ourselves.
Thank you. Duly noted. And before we go to vote, just again, reiterate our gratitude to Gregory and the Humane Society, your participation as well as the work that has been done by Police Chief Schick, Cory Hoffman, Catherine Sellers, and our prosecuting attorney as well. And this, like you said, this is state-of-the-art and new and needed, has needed to be updated. Unfortunately, the impetus was because of a, a dog that was killed by one that had had a long history of violence. So there has been a motion and a second. There has been some discussion. If there's no more discussion, we'll call a vote, please. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
May, Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you, Council. And again, we will have that two-week period to do some additional reviews before it's officially adopted. So thank you again. We are now on item 10B. This is introduction and first reading by title only of ordinance 33, series of 2021, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City, Amending Chapter 9.22 of the City of Canyon City Municipal Code by the Addition of a New Section 9.22.040 Prohibiting Sitting or Lying Down in Public Rights of Way." Turn this time over to Cory Hoffman and Chief Schick and Ryan Stevens. Whoever wants to go first.
Ryan, you want me to take first crack at this one?
Go ahead, Cory. Thank you.
So the city has, as we know, has been having a lot of issues with individuals experiencing homelessness. And so this is frankly part of a multi-pronged approach to address some of the issues that are, are created by the homeless population. But as we've discussed, one of the constraints on the city is that you cannot criminalize homelessness. There is, there is case law that makes it abundantly clear that that is unconstitutional and a violation of equal protection. So what we are looking at is ways to address... So, um, what we are looking at is ways to um, address real world impacts that certainly are caused by and large by our homeless population, but are not targeted to them based on criminalizing homelessness. And so this ordinance is premised on the idea that the right of way is uh, intended to be utilized for certain purposes. And those purposes are for vehicular and pedestrian traffic. To be able to, for, for people to be able to use the right of way for its intended purpose. And if someone is sitting down or lying down in the right of way in a place that is not intended for that purpose, the right of way is not being used for its intended purpose. And so that is ultimately the premise of this ordinance. It is um, not, certainly not the first of its kind in Colorado. There are a number of communities that have um, used this tool. And it really does attempt to address um, the real world safety impacts um, caused by folks that are um, maybe not using the right of way for its intended purpose. And so I'm going to give two examples. One that is the unconstitutional way to address this and the way that this hopefully addresses it in a manner that is in accordance with the law. Um, what makes a, an ordinance unconstitutional is if you are penalizing the message. So if someone is sitting on a corner and asking for money, and that is a crime, but that same individual was asking for directions and it's not a crime, that's unconstitutional. And um, the United States Supreme Court has indicated that. The Tenth Circuit, which is the federal district court that applies to the state of Colorado, has indicated that. However, if you are addressing the impacts of people not using the right of way for its intended purpose. So for example, someone is sitting in the right of way or lying down in the right of way and a bicyclist or um, a motor vehicle hits them or has to avoid them and goes into a portion of the roadway that is not where they should be, that creates a real world safety issue. So that's sort of the premise of this ordinance is to address the conduct of um, making it unsafe to use the right of way for, not for its intended purpose. If someone is standing in the right of way um, in a place that a pedestrian can stand in and holding a sign, that does not violate this ordinance. And it can't because that would be the, the criminalizing the message, if you will. But if someone is, takes that same sign and is sitting down in the right of way, this would violate that ordinance. And that is because you are no longer using it unless you're on a bench or some portion of the right of way that was for that intended purpose. Um, that is what this ordinance is intended to address. And, and I guess the last thing I would say is you can't look at it in a vacuum. It is part of, again, a multi-pronged approach and we're, we're working on a whole host of other approaches, but this is one, one stool on a probably multi-legged stool.
Um, Tim Dennehy, do you want to ask first or have Chief?
Go ahead, Chief.
I think it's important to uh, note, as Mr. Hoffman said, this is, this is a path to help provide public safety without criminalizing uh, homelessness. This is not about uh, taking care of panhandlers. This is about making sure our, our public right of ways um, are a passage that's a, a, a path for safe travel for all of our citizens. Um, so I, as he also indicated, this is a, this is a multi-layered approach um, to resolving this issue. Um, but uh, it's a very, it's a very fine walk.
Councilmember Dennehy?
So something you said, because I saw some people out this weekend promoting six A and six B. And um, a few of the people were sitting down on the sidewalk. So that then becomes a violation.
It, it does. And what, what is built into this is also a warning. Uh, and that's an important component of this to assure that people not only know the law, but are able to change their behavior to make it safe.
Thank you.
Oh, interestingly, the people holding the six A and six B signs, because I was there, um, they were also in the driveway. And so to get into a parking space for private businesses, so that actually technically was a danger to public safety to have them standing in that where cars needed to honk, to put their signal on honk and point like, I need to get in here on highway fifty. So that's an interesting point. Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I would just like to point out that um, this is a multi-pronged approach and that one of the other prongs is going to be discussed here in a week or two uh, in these council chambers. And that will be community agency funding, where the city uh, puts its money where its mouth is uh, to help address some of the social problems uh, that, that we see in the city. Uh, and with the theory behind it being that, that they're, the private, private organizations are much more effective in spending dollars uh, than, than governmental ones. Uh, and because of that, uh, the city has decided as a whole to fund certain community organizations uh, that provide benefits uh, to different segments and different populations within our town, including the homeless.
Yeah, to help create functional living within the law. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, thanks so much for, for your time and, and in drafting this um, and, and explaining it as part of that multi-pronged approach. Could I ask if um, either the homelessness coalition or the Built for Zero or any of the folks who came to the Vision Committee meeting a couple of months ago to talk to us about homelessness, um, did you talk to them at all in your drafting of this or consult at all? Thanks.
I don't believe so, not to my knowledge.
I, I, I was directed to draft the ordinance. I didn't know I was supposed to talk to other agencies after that. I apologize if I was.
No, I was just curious about um, how it was drafted and kind of what input was up. Thanks.
I didn't attend the last homeless coalition meeting, so I don't know if it was brought up there or not. I know I have not. Chief Schick?
I do not believe that it was discussed with any other agencies.
Um, Councilmember Smith?
I just wanted to kind of chime in here because if I was watching this at home and, or on Facebook, I would be like, what the heck are they talking about?
Thank you.
So. I, I just wanted to uh, kind of decipher the legal speak and, and just kind of give a blatant blanket statement of we are trying to protect business owner, business owners from sleeping homeless people in front of their businesses. Um, and, and I think that's important to say it that way because while I appreciate Corey and all of his um, legal.
Protections.
Protections. I think that it's important for people to know that we're not just passing ordinances to pass ordinances. This is for the safety of the community and um, cryptic over. Thank you.
And that actually leads into a question I have. Um, because in the ordinance, I see on item B on the first page, it talks about time periods that this is enforceable. And the time periods it says that people cannot be in the public right of way. Um, and it's including upon any bedding, chair, stool, or any other object placed upon the surface of the public right of way between the hours of seven o'clock AM and ten o'clock PM daily. And between the hours of ten o'clock PM and three o'clock AM on Friday and Saturday nights. And so my question is, why is it only effective on Friday and Saturday nights and not during the weeknights as well?
The, as part of the multi-pronged approach, there's also no camping and no sleeping. So the, the, this is more intended for times folks are awake.
Oh, like if the bars are open till really late and there's?
And just, it's the time when people are actually utilizing the right of way. Um, and so part of the, again, the defensibility of the ordinance is addressing when people are actually using the right of way for its intended purpose and tying this restriction to that timeframe. As opposed to, we also have a no camping on public property ordinance. And if people were sleeping, we'd use that tool um, to address Councilmember Smith's concern.
Okay, so I actually had a business reach out to me today. I forwarded the message to Chief Schick of a business that in their alleyway, there is a homeless encampment that has um, human feces. It also um, has like four Safeway shopping carts. And they're obviously are, are probably spending weeknights sleeping there. Is the way our camping ordinance, will that already address that as is?
We would have to know if it was public or private property. That's the first piece.
So if it's an alleyway, is that considered public or private?
I, I don't know where in the alley. I mean, that's, that, so the first piece would be to determine if it was public or private property. If it was public property, the camping ordinance would apply. If it was private property, it's a trespass.
So either way, it's, it can be, it can be addressed for that particular situation. Okay. Any other questions by council?
And Mayor, I would just say unfortunately, this is an area of the law we've had to um, get into the weeds on um, a lot more than frankly, we've ever had to in the history of, of doing this kind of work because um, the issue with folks experiencing homelessness has become so prevalent and has so negatively impacted the community in, in a number of ways. And so we are, we are um, working on this multi-layered approach in a way that tries to address the impact on the community, again, without criminalizing homelessness. And it is a very difficult line to navigate.
It is a difficult line to navigate, which is why we have you there. But also again, reiterate to Brandon's point to the public. We are using every tool we can find within the bounds of the law to address homelessness, both with the criminal behavior or the problems of human feces and encampments and alleyways or on private property. But also, on the other hand, of prevention of homelessness in the first place because that actually costs a lot less money and helping those who need help, that they can, and want help, that they can get it to lead productive lives. But also this provides us that extra two, the extra teeth that we need for those who do not wish to abide within the bounds of the law, that we can deal with that element of homelessness or general public behavior accordingly.
And, and I know I've mentioned this to the council before, but I'll, I'll um, mention again in this environment that um, letting private property owners, albeit residential or commercial, know what their rights are as it relates to private property is an incredibly important tool. Because if someone is not using property for its intended purpose, private property, a private property owner has the right to tell someone to leave. And the police department can enforce that as a trespass. And I think oftentimes um, businesses don't understand the full, their, their rights um, in their own property in this context.
I think that's really important because we do have private property owners that don't realize that they have that ability to have the police offer eviction notices. And yeah, go ahead and, and come, you'll need to come up to the microphone. And I'll give an example. This is not a piece of property in the city. It's actually in the county. There was a homeless encampment on private property. Multiple um, neighbors had been calling the police there many times for um, terrible things that were happening, inappropriate things. Whether it was having an outhouse built over the creek, dogs biting the neighbors, you know, and other um, things that were not appropriate for that private property. But because the police were coming frequently, even though that particular department did not offer eviction notices, it was becoming such a harassment to the homeless encampment that they are choosing to leave. And so, I mean, that's just another piece of that picture. So let's go ahead and turn up to public comment from Beth Ketchmark.
Hi, um, I, I, we have several properties and, and so I was just wondering, at what point, um, because I know that there are some municipalities where if you have a police come to your property too many times for reports, it can become a nuisance property. And then you will be notified as a landlord that you have a nuisance and then you have to act on it. So that's one thing I'm concerned about. But also, um, kind of, and this is actually the same property, the old jail building over there. We have numerous people that camp under the back porch and, and the other day, um, my husband and, and someone else went and asked the people to leave. And then that night, we happened to encounter that same person out on Main Street. And they were very, very angry and I don't know if they recognized my husband, but I was actually concerned about them breaking the windows on our businesses on Main Street in, you know, in, in retribution to the fact that we had asked them to move out of the, behind the jail building. Um, and they're back there now and apparently they're threatening to burn down the building now. So, but anyway, I was just, I, I agree totally that we should be, as private business owners and building owners and rental, residential owners, that we should have no, more knowledge of what our rights are as far as dealing with people who are living in our properties without paying rent or breaking into our properties or threatening to destroy our properties or become nuisance properties. So, I, I, I want to second Brandon's opinion on that. Or Corey's opinion, actually.
Yeah, I'd like to have, is there a reaction from our attorney or Chief Schick to those concerns about a nuisance property?
I know of no ordinance that we're, we're tracking nuisance calls and, and qualifying residents or businesses in that capacity.
Yeah, I know the city of Denver had one. It's what we had years ago. We had it. I just found the papers.
And I will add that uh, if you have those, those issues to call us and if nothing else, allow us the opportunity to know what's going on.
Sure.
And put the, put your property, your concerned property on our patrol watch list. So if nothing else, you get a, a pattern of patrol watches throughout the night and day, um, just to try and safeguard some of your, some of those concerns.
Okay, yes, thank you. I, I think that the whole COVID thing put a lot of weird um, restrictions on everybody's ability to react to any kind of situation. So.
I will say this on the record because I hear it all the time. And uh, I would rather you call us and not need us than, than need us and not call us. And so often I hear people say, well, I didn't want to bother you. It's not a bother. That's why we're here.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
And then, go ahead, Corey.
And, and the only thing I would add that I think that, um, it may be what, part of what is, what the, the question was addressing is the city can use its nuisance ordinance if there are, there's continued criminal activity um, at a given property. Um, and so I'll give it an example that is much different from the homeless, but I think it's a good example of where oftentimes municipalities use their nuisance ordinance to address illegal conduct. And that is um, illicit activity at, for example, massage businesses. If a landlord rents to a business that it, uh, the landlord knows or should have known is conducting illegal massage. And I think everyone knows what we mean by that. And that is often a, an indication of human trafficking and those kind. Absolutely, it is the type of thing that we can use our nuisance ordinance for. Um, because it is a landlord that is allowing his tenant or her tenant to conduct illegal activity in, in a space. And so if, for example, a strip center was so dilapidated that it became a place where folks were trespassing, that is actually an opportunity where the city may, we may seek your approval to use our nuisance ordinance because it is conduct that is contributing to that, that type of um, illegal activity on private property. So it is a possibility, absolutely.
So that's kind of the opposite of you, where in your situation, you need to call the police regularly.
Right.
Whereas other landlords are saying, yes, go ahead, do what you want, live here. And I have two more things to add for you too, Beth, and that is to invite Chief Schick or one of our police officers to come to that property because they actually have expertise on how to make some changes maybe to the surroundings so it's less comfortable and conducive for those homeless encampments. And that's kind of natural barriers for it.
And that is our plan on the, that part of it.
And then secondly, um, we are doing kind of an experimental pilot program for a safe outdoor shelter out by, behind DHS just across the street from the CCPD. So when we ask people to leave, or when you ask people to leave, they're, instead of just moving their encampment to Main Street or to Macon Plaza or down by the river, we just seem they just move to one spot to another, still making trouble. That there is a safe outdoor space where we can invite them to go. There are rules that they have to follow, but there is right now, an experimental pilot program where there could be a place where they can be and set up their tent. They don't need to be behind your building.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a great idea too. Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm. Okay, well, thank you. I'm glad you're here, Beth, that you stayed till the bitter end. Yeah. Any other comments by city council? Yeah, Mandy Reed?
So the education piece I was just thinking about, um, since this is going to be multi-layered and we're working towards it, that might be something that maybe we can put together to be able to distribute to, whether it's business owners or what, on our website or on Facebook and things like that, maybe just like a quick, simple document of maybe an idea of, you know, what to do when they-
idea of, you know, what to do in these situations, or some basic rights. I know we don't want to like just throw out a bunch of legal advice on the internet, I'm not saying that, but maybe there's some opportunities to, as we're handling each layer, to educate about the layer that we're working on right now, and to continue to engage the community, because this is a topic that, I don't think there's anyone in Fremont County who's not passionate about this topic. And the destruction is just, even just the visual destruction, when we have people that are visiting our community, and just what they're being exposed to. So everyone from parents to business owners is impacted, so maybe there's an opportunity there to, I don't know if we can put like, I guess like a document, or just something like, what are your rights, or what do you do, or I have this situation happening, who do I contact first, and just maybe put it on social media. It wouldn't take, I wouldn't think, a whole bunch of time, just so we can, again, that kind of customer service face, like we're helping and serving our community, so.
You had some good feedback, thank you. Councilmember Smith?
I was just going to make a motion.
Any Schmisher, okay, go ahead, please.
Madam Mayor and council, I move to approve ordinance number thirty-three, series of twenty twenty-one. Is this first reading? On first reading?
Yes, second. There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? Call a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you, city council, thank you, Corey, and Police Chief Schick, we really appreciate your work as well. We are now on to item eleven A, and that is to go into an executive session to discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of any real, personal, or other property interest pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four zero two four A, specifically the possible of acquisition of property by the city.
I just have something I have to share.
Sure.
The, so, Madam Mayor, I so move?
Yes.
Second.
You so move? It's been motioned in a second, any discussion? Call a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
All right, we will prepare to go into executive session.